Good evening. My name is Matt Nelson. I'm the Superintendent of Schools for the Sanford School Department, and I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:03. The first school committee meeting of the year in January is designated by our city charter as an organizational meeting where we elect a school committee chair and vice chair for the ensuing year. Until we elect a chair, I have the privilege of running the meeting. At this point, would you all please stand for the pledge, if you're able, to please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to make the following adjustments to the agenda and move the following items forward to be heard next. J2, both 1 and 2 of J2, election of officers, chairperson and vice chairperson. J3, appointment of standing committees, and J6, 2023-2024 audit report. I would also like to remove J1, the swearing-in of newly elected school committee members from the agenda. I would also like to take this time to welcome Lisa Blanchett and Jonathan Stimmel as our new school committee members. Originally, we were looking to have them sworn in as part of this meeting. They were able to get that taken care of earlier this afternoon, so we're going to remove, we're going to welcome them to the school committee, and then also remove J1, the swearing-in of the newly elected school committee members from the agenda. Do I have a motion for these adjustments?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero. Our first order of business is to elect a school committee chair for 2025. The chair's responsibilities are outlined in our policy BDB. Some of these duties include acting as the presiding officer at all meetings of the school committee, being the public spokesperson for the school committee, appointing subcommittees, calling special meetings as necessary, and consulting with the superintendent for planning meeting agendas. At this time, I will ask for nominations for the position of school committee chairperson.
I nominate Amy Sevigny as chair of the school committee.
I'll second that nomination.
Are there any other nominations? I will need a motion to close nominations.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'll go to vote for myself, isn't it?
All those in favor of Amy Sevigny as school committee chairperson? Anybody opposed? Congratulations, Amy Sevigny. I now turn the meeting over to you.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask for any nominations for position of school committee vice chairperson.
I nominate Melissa Simpson to be vice chair of the school committee.
I second that nomination.
I second that nomination.
Wonderful. Are there any other nominations? All right, may I have a vote?
Need to close.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to close nominations for vice chairperson?
Make a motion to close the nominations for vice chair.
All second.
Perfect. All those in favor of Melissa Simpson for vice chairperson? Any opposed? That was your option. All right. Congratulations.
You as well.
All right. So, we have, oh, okay. So now we're going to go to J3, appointments for standing committee assignments. We have the following standing committees on the school committee. Our policy BDA on school committee organization states that the school committee chair shall appoint members to the committee to standing committee. I'm looking for committee members for the following committees. We have discussed this, so I'm going to appoint for the adult education, Melissa and myself. For curriculum, Paula and Melissa. Dropout prevention, Lisa and John. Personnel negotiations, Lisa and myself. Sanford Regional Technical Center Advisory Committee is Lisa and Melissa. The Safety Committee, which includes facilities, grounds, and capital improvement. Give me one second, I'm sorry. John. Yep. For Policy Committee, Paula and Melissa. Sanford Performing Arts Center, Lisa and Paula. Wellness Committee, John and myself. Legacy Foundation, Melissa and Lisa. Special Ed Advisory Committee, myself and Melissa. And Professional Educator, Professional Growth Advisory Council Committee, I'm sorry, PEPG is Paula. Perfect. All right. Moving on, for the 2024-2025 School Committee Budget Calendar. Do we have a recommendation to accept the 2024?
No, we're back. Now we go back to...
Sorry, let me switch to the pink.
Approving of minutes.
Here we go. Yep. Sorry, it was not on that one. So we are now going to approve the minutes for Monday, December 2, 2024, which was a regular meeting at 6:00. Monday, December 16, 2024, executive session at 8:45 a.m., and Monday, December 16, 2024, workshop at 2:30 p.m. Do I have a recommendation to approve the minutes as presented?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Perfect. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. And do we have any public comments? No public comments. And for communications, moving on, one, we have an SCAE Top Performer for Fiscal Year letter.
Sure. I just, back in December, I received a letter from Megan Dichter, State Director of Adult Education, as part of the Maine Department of Education, sending a letter to inform that the Sanford Adult Education is an adult education top performer for the fiscal year 2024. A top performer is a program that has met or exceeded the state targets in measurable skill gains and other performance targets. Sanford Adult Education met three of the state's performance targets in enrollment growth, MSG rate, post-test rate, and data match rate. And the numbers represent the hard work and impact of adult education it's had in the Sanford community. So, a big thank you and a congratulations to all the people involved at Sanford Community Adult Education.
Congratulations. All right, moving on to committee reports.
Giving an update, Special Education Advisory Committee has not met since our last meeting. We do have a meeting this week, this Wednesday, January 8, at 2:30. We will continue to discuss and look at the decision for the Sanford School Department regarding services for three- and four-year-olds. We, in our last meeting, we had a presentation from the Maine Department of Education, looking to see if Sanford would want to be moving forward with that into Cohort 2 for this upcoming year. So we're going to be breaking that down, and we also will be also focusing on programming for 18- to 22-year-olds, as I think we'll be looking at developing a subcommittee to also look into that further. Policy Committee, Matt, you'll see later in the agenda, we have policies coming up as a result of coming back from that agenda, so I won't speak any further on that. Curriculum Committee, our next curriculum committee meeting is tomorrow, January 7. And then Safety Committee did meet earlier this afternoon, and we will plan to give an update on that at our next meeting for that. So those are committee reports.
Wonderful. All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Sure. First up is, oh. We forgot to bring, we forgot to bring Christian forward. Sorry about that. Maybe that didn't follow in the J6 in the audit report with that.
I'm not sure why mine is different than this one, but, okay.
Yeah. So my apologies for that. As we did make an adjustment in the agenda earlier to move item under new business, in terms of moving J6, the 2023-2024 audit report, we'd like to bring Christian Smith to come up and be able to give us an overview and presentation of that. You can sit right there, and then you just, for the microphone, Christian, you just have to hit the green button.
All right. Looks like it's on. All right. Thank you. I think we have some slides for you tonight. Hopefully it'll make the presentation a little easier to follow and a little more concise. So, my name is Christian Smith. I'm a partner at Whipfley LLP, your CPA firm out of South Portland, Maine. Just a brief overview of what the audit involves. So the next slide, please. Relationship with the auditors. We are independent auditors. We work with management to perform the audit. You've hired us to express an opinion on the financial statements, which are management's responsibility. The results of our audit is we have expressed what we call an unmodified or a clean opinion, which means that the financial statements are fairly stated and they're complete and accurate in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's what you look to achieve. That's the highest level of report that we can give. It's pretty much an A, an A or an A-plus on your report card for financial reporting. This is just a list of the different reports that we issue, financial statements. We also issue what we call a required communications letter. We also have to send a report to the Maine Department of Education stating whether or not you've complied with the Maine School Finance Act. And then there's additional testing related to the federal grant money you receive, called the single audit report, where we test federal grant monies that are received. The next slide just kind of sums up the results of the audit overall. So there were, you know, no changes in accounting principles, no difficulties in performing the audit, no disagreements with management, and no audit adjustments. So the audit went very, very well. Your finance team does an excellent job in preparing for the audit and, you know, as well as just maintaining the financial records, you know, on a recurring basis. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or other comments. And then just to kind of highlight the grants that we did test for federal grant money, the ESAR program funds, which is COVID money, and special education. So we tested about $4 million in federal grants, and there were no findings related to the use or compliance with federal requirements there. The next slide, and then the subsequent slides, we've got some excerpts from the financial statements and some charts that hopefully help you follow along, but you'll see some of the same information presented in the subsequent slides. So in total, your general fund balance is $4.3 million, which was an increase of $514,000 from the prior year. You had, your fund balance increased as a result of positive budget variances. So you had a $335,000 favorable variance. Revenues exceeded your budget, and expenditures were about $1.3 million less than budget for the year. You had planned to use about $1.1 million of fund balance in the current year budget, and as I mentioned before, the actual result for the year was an increase in fund balance of $504,000, which results in a favorable results of about $1.6 million. And you'll see that on the next slide. There are other funds as well. The school does have about $1.8 million in high school construction funds that are ultimately going to be returned to the state or possibly used for future interest. I guess that's still, that program is still need to be, still needs to be closed out. And you've got another $4.9 million in other elementary school construction, as well as school grants. So the next slide just kind of shows you some of the information I just summarized for you. Page six is the budget to actual. And if you look at the middle column, the actual column, you'll see towards the bottom, the increase in fund balance of $504,000 that I mentioned. You'll also see at the top right, the favorable variances in revenue. So there's about a $335,000 positive result. Revenues exceeded budget, and expenditures were about $1.2 million less than budget. So again, that all results in a favorable position for the year, an increase in your fund balance. If there's any questions or comments to be added to that. And I should also mention as well, we did have a workshop prior to this where we went over the financial statements in a little more detail as well. So this next slide just kind of also shows you some of the information I provided. So if you look at the very first column, you'll see the general fund balance, a total of about $4.3 million. And you can see that it's broken up into several different buckets or categories. Very bottom line, unassigned general fund balance of $1,997,941. That, those are funds that are available for future use, for basically for any purpose. You've got, right above that is carryover funds of $989,511. That, those are the funds that you have voted on using in your fiscal June 30, 2025 budget. Everything above that line, you've got some committed funds, or what, I think what you refer to as reserve funds, money that has been voted on and set aside for specific purposes, such as construction costs, health insurance, special education, those types of things. So those are board voted money that's been set aside. This next slide is a, it's a footnote within the financial statements, and so we're required to kind of report and disclose any deficit fund balances. And it should be noted that this number of about $550,000, it just simply represents timing. It represents money that's been spent for grants that has not yet been billed, either because it can't be built because the money hasn't been spent, or there's just a process to go through with the state, which is the case with respect to ESAR. This, the number on this report last year was a negative $3 million. Most of that had to do with ESAR funds and the process for getting reimbursement for the state. And so, as your finance director, Cheryl, had mentioned, there was a lot of hard work and effort went into, you know, getting that number down from where it was and to where it's at now. So you're in very good shape with respect to billing and cash flow. So the next few slides are just some graphs, hopefully that allow you to understand where you are and how you compare to some other schools and towns as well. So this just shows the fund balance over the last three years. You know, a little over 4.2 million back in 2022. Fund balance dipped down to about $3.8 million in '23, and as of June 30, '24, about $4,350,000. So fund balance did increase again this year. So this slide is just really designed to kind of show you how you compare to other similar-sized school districts, school districts or school departments, I should say. So the state allows you to carry over your fund balance each year, your unassigned fund balance, and you can carry over, effective June 30, 2005, they're going to, that percentage is 5%. And so Sanford, Sanford's bar is the orange bar, and that basically shows that 3% of your annual budget is set aside in, as, as unassigned fund balance. And you can see where there's, you know, three other communities that have a much higher percentage, and two other communities that are at a lower percentage. And, you know, 3% is a good place to be. It's, you know, it's, there's sufficient cushion there for, you know, future uses and future unexpected costs. But, you know, I think you could possibly say about the other districts that have a higher percentage. I mean, there's a balance between, you know, how much of the taxpayer funds you want to retain and how much you want to increase the budget each year. So I'd say that the, you know, the school's been relatively conservative in not building an excessive fund balance, and keep, just keeps more money with the taxpayers. The next two slides, just kind of, these were slides that I showed to the city presentation, and they are applicable to the school. So this is specific to the city of Sanford, the entire city of Sanford, and debt service as a percentage of the annual budget. So you could see there, I actually have two columns for Sanford. The first column is the total gross debt service. So that's about 12% to 13% of total budget. And that does, it seems high. However, what you need to understand, and what I've presented in the second Sanford column, which shows it at about 3%, is that a majority of the city's debt, which is related to the school department, is funded by the state. So you receive about $11 million a year in state subsidy to pay specifically for debt service. So when you factor that in, your net debt service cost for the city is really rather low. It's really along the lines of 3%. And whereas you could see these other communities are significantly higher, 5%, 8%, or 10% or so, or more. And that's a function of the state-approved construction project for the, for the high school, and I believe maybe some other elementary school renovations recently, or middle school. So the next slide I have is kind of similar idea here, just showing, you know, the education department is generally the largest expenditure category in any town or city's budget. So looking at it here, the first column for Sanford shows that it's, you know, probably 56% or 57% of total citywide budget. But when you factor in the subsidy from the state to pay for debt service, it's really actually one of the lower percentages. So you're really at about 45%, which is kind of in line with how Augusta is. So it just basically means that there's, you know, a lower percentage of the actual taxpayer funds are being used to pay for the education budget here in Sanford. I think I just have, yeah, this is the last slide. Yeah, there was nothing new or significant this year as far as accounting standards or disclosures. And to sum it up, you know, the audit went very well. And, yeah, it's another good year.
Thank you so very much, Christian. Does anybody have any questions or that you'd like to ask? I think this shows an amazing job. I want to give a round of applause to Cheryl and her team. That was an A-plus report. So, thank you, Cheryl, and your team. And thank you, Christian.
Yeah. As Christian mentioned, if we were doing a report card, we would have been the honor roll, high honors, A, A+. So a big thank you to Cheryl and her team for all the work that they did. It is an immense amount of work to be able to do that and see that the shape that we're in with that shows that. So very much thank you to Cheryl. And as Christian mentioned, we did go into depth earlier in a workshop in terms of digging deeper into the audit. We'll be able to include the full audit to be able to be part of the minutes of this meeting, if anyone is interested in being able to look further for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry to make you wait. All right. Now let's get back on track. Sorry about that. Now we're going to superintendent's report.
All right. So first off is going to be the MIAAS report, Main Integrated Youth Health Survey. So we've got a team to be able to come back and present this report to us. So I'll hand it over to Steve Bucier.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the presentation of the MIAAS results for us. MIAAS stands for the Main Integrated Youth Health Survey. This was given back in the fall of 2023. It was given to our middle school and high school students in grades 5 through 12. It is given to high school, middle school students throughout the state of Maine with that. And I guess I have all the slides. So the purpose of the MIAAS survey is to assess the health status of main youth, to assess their attitudes, both positive and negative attitudes, and behaviors that influence healthy development. Data from MIAAS is used by schools, communities, to plan and evaluate prevention. We're looking at what can we do to prevent things from happening. And it also provides us with useful information to, when we have to apply for grants. For instance, when we applied for the Substance Use Counselor Grant that we received a couple of years ago, the need came from our MIAAS data. And so that's where we were able to secure that grant. This is a collaborative effort through the Maine Department of Education and the Maine CDC. And tonight, I have two folks that are going to take the lead on this next. And we have Beth Letourneau, who's the Director of School Counseling here in Sanford, and we have Stephanie Masters Plumidum from Maine Health. In Maine Health, I just want to say they've been a great partner for the Sanford School Department as we worked through this work on a number of fronts. And we're fortunate to have Stephanie here this evening. So I'll turn it over to Beth.
Thank you. So this first slide that you'll see here talks about the mental health status of high school students, and it compares both depression and suicidal ideation for our students in Sanford versus the state of Maine. Sanford is in the blue, and then the state of Maine is in the red. And so this first, to the left, is the percent of high school students who felt sad or hopeless for two-plus weeks in the school year. You can see that Sanford was at 42%. Of our students answered affirmatively to that question, whereas in the state of Maine, the average was 35%. That would be considered significant, statistically significant. Next, the question was related to students who had considered suicide in the past year. Sanford, 24%. And then in 20, the state of Maine at 18%. If you look at the change between 2009 to now, you would see a difference in 15% up to 24%. And also, the state of Maine also had an increase from 13% to 18% from 2009 until now. I can go to the next slide, Steve. And so some of these, this data, I'll be honest with you, can be pretty frustrating, overwhelming, disappointing. But I think it's important data for us to have as a district to know how we continue to move forward. I think also for our community to know sort of how our students are feeling. And so I'll go specifically at the ones, look at the ones that are significantly different from the state of Maine. The first I had mentioned earlier was the sad or hopeless, considered suicide. One of the parts that is particularly difficult for me to read is that 41% of our students feel like they matter compared to the state, where 50% of students feel like they matter. And lastly, on this slide, 25% of our students at the high school level report that they have been bullied electronically in the past year. Go to the next slide, Steve. This next slide is specific to middle school. The previous ones were related to high school. And so, related to feeling sad or hopeless, feeling safe at school, consideration of suicide, and feeling like they mattered, that was all in line comparing Sanford against the rest of the state of Maine. Where we were significantly different, and unfortunately significantly higher, was if students felt like they had ever been bullied electronically. And we had 42% of our middle school students agreeing to that statement versus 35% with that. I would also, I know later in the presentation, Steve is going to go over some of the ways that we're working on this. I would encourage parents, specifically middle school parents who are looking at this data, there is a national movement called Wait Till 8 regarding use of cell phones by our young people, and that's really something to consider. We're seeing an increase in kids reporting being bullied electronically, but a lot of that has to do obviously with access and just developmentally not being ready for that amount of access to the world.
And that's me. So, hi, everyone. My name is Stephanie. I am a substance use prevention specialist at Maine Health. We've worked very closely with your team over the past. I've been here a little over a year, but we just feel very grateful to have you all as partners. And you really set the, really set the gold star standard for what school district should be doing. So when you're, you know, looking at all of this data, which can, which can seem daunting, it can seem like you're, you know, why are we still in this place? I want to assure you that you, we really, we see what every school district is doing, and you really are setting the bar high. And I just want to commend you for all, all the hard work and attention you're putting towards this. But it can be difficult, especially we have some, you know, students here too. It can be difficult to see some of this data. So we want to, we'll focus on some positives too, because there are positives. So as you'll see here, this is some substance use data, high school specific. So as you'll see here, this is some substance use data, high school specific. And like Beth, I'm just gonna, there's, there can be a lot here to comb through. So I'm just going to focus on what's significantly different. The first three, the first three behaviors that you'll see, Sanford is being compared to Maine data. And those are pretty, pretty similar to the state. You're all pretty similar to the state. It's where we start talking about marijuana, and I'm actually going to refer to it as cannabis. It can get confusing, but the state is really pushing to talk about it as cannabis. So I don't want to go back and forth, but I'll be referring to it as cannabis. So that is where we're seeing Sanford's rates are significantly higher than the state rate is the behaviors relating to cannabis. So first time use before age 13, Sanford's at 10%, Maine is at 6%. And percent of high school students who said it would be sort of easy or very easy to get marijuana is 60% in Sanford versus 54% for the state. So there's some more cannabis slides as well that'll highlight some of these other areas. And I just want to say, I, again, you guys are already doing a lot of work on this. So you have the vape committee who's, you know, focusing on vaping, but cannabis, you know, they go, they go hand in hand. And so you're doing a lot of good things in this area too. So we'll go to the next slide, please. All right. So this again is high school specific, and this is comparing Sanford data from 2019 to your data from 2023. So it does look like your substance use rates are not significant in, in change over these two years, which again can seem like, well, are initiatives really making a difference then? And I would say that it is a great thing to see that they're not getting worse, especially through COVID, where, where kids were at home and they had more access. They had more time on their hands, more access. It is a good thing that we're not seeing those numbers worsening. And I would also be very interested to see what the next round is going to look like with all the work that you're doing as well. All right. So this slide, the two boxes that you see are middle school data, and then the, the bar graph is high school specific data. So again, this is just the cannabis data pulled out because there were multiple areas where Sanford was significantly worse than the state relating to cannabis. So measures like ever having used cannabis, first use before age 13, use in the past 30 days, and it being easy to get were all worse than the state average for that. And then you'll see in the blue boxes for middle school, one in three Sanford middle school students said it would be easy to get cannabis if they wanted to. And two times more Sanford middle school students had first tried marijuana or cannabis before age 11 than Maine middle schoolers. And this is kind of in prevention anyway. We know the earlier you can start prevention, the better. And this, I think, drives that point home as well, that even having these conversations starting as early as fifth grade or in elementary school in an age-appropriate way is really the earlier, the better. Because unfortunately, it is, it is starting young. So I know you all are planning a panel for your fifth graders. So that's, that's a great way to handle that. So this is the last slide I have. So this is just middle school students. And so again, you're seeing Sanford middle school compared to Maine middle school students. And I will focus on the top one, which is significantly different. So the behavior is percent of middle school students who ever use an electronic vape product. Sanford is 17%, Maine is 11. And like I had already, had already mentioned, you all have recognized this as an issue. You, you took initiative. You're doing a lot of really great things that I would be shocked if on the next round of the M.I.A.S. that we didn't see a decrease because of all your, your great efforts. So yes, we will hope the next round is better and that we can focus on the positives, that we're going to see the, the fruits of that, those labors pay off. So that is what I have. I'm going to pass it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Next, we're going to look at protective factors. The first is examples of individual characteristics and conditions. First, positive self-worth, high self-efficacy, social and emotional competence, positive relationships, good decision-making, self-control, planning, and goal-setting. When I look at some of those individual characteristics and conditions, those match aligned with our social-emotional learning that we do district-wide, that we're working with our students towards these things, beginning in grades pre-K all the way through 12. Next, examples of environmental characteristics and conditions. So positive parenting. I looked at some of our relationships that we have that Steve is going to talk about a little bit later, but some of the campaigns that we have with community agencies. Parent and caregiver engagement, social support, and I would encourage social support not just for students, but also for families. School connectedness, activities, social groups, trusted adult. Why do we do all these clubs and activities for a wide variety of students? It's to have that connection to school and also safe and caring communities. So next, when we look at what protective factors we have and how Maine high school students compare to Stanford high school students, when we look at that, the ones that are significantly, statistically significant is the first, is that 73% of our students feel like their family gives them love and support compared to the state of Maine, which is at 81%. And again, for all those watching out there, that's not a knock at our families, but rather us to have an awareness of how our students are feeling and what they are feeling about the families that they are, are part of. Next, 80% of Maine high school students say that they talk with their parents frequently about school, whereas 71% of our students share that they talk frequently to their parents about school. I think for all of us, especially the parents out there, even though your children may be highly annoyed by you asking them about their day, anyone here ever get annoyed by that? It does matter to our kids, right? They're going to act like it matters. That's their job, and our job is to keep asking. Next, 34% of our students feel like the school cares about them compared to the state of Maine, where 43%. That's a tough one, especially as a longtime school employee who works very, very hard, like a lot of our staff. Seeing that is discouraging, to be honest with you, but I think it's also a starting point and something for us to share with our staff, not as a point of saying, listen, this is what the kids think, but also, wow, maybe what we're doing or how we're showing that we're, we're caring is not a way that they're receiving or understanding. Also, more, 36% of our students share that they have four or more ACES. ACES stand for adverse childhood experiences. We could do a whole evening workshop about ACES. So I won't get into it too much tonight, but I will say if you have an interest in what adverse childhood experiences are and how they have an impact on our students, please let me know. I'm happy to get information out to you. But the fact that 36% of our students share that they have had at least four or more adverse childhood experiences is a lot, is a lot. Some of the protective factors that we have in Sanford are after-school programs, music, arts, athletics, clubs. And I also, you know, as a school employee, appreciate the wide variety, right? From athletics to music, both the middle school and the high school have very high numbers in the D and D club after-school, if you know about that club at the high school. But the people are here for the D and D club, right? As well as art club, music clubs, leadership clubs, a wide variety of clubs are offered. Jobs for Maine graduates, which is a great program for our students, alternative learning, career and technical education, upward bound. I'm always proud to talk about the upward bound program that we have at Sanford High, which has the highest, highest number of students in the state that are part of it. Embark, which is a program that we work with the local community colleges as well as universities to help our students who are first generation going on to college. And also a new collaboration that we're working with is Goodwill Industries, which is part of sort of the giant goodwill franchise that most of us know about. But Goodwill Industries is working with us at the high school to really help students that plan on going directly to the world to work, who may not have necessarily the skills to go right to work, to help those students have a real plan besides, I'm just going to work after high school, but instead, this is where I'm working. I now have my license to be able to get to work. I have the steel-toed boots I need for the job that I have. So another great collaboration. And lastly, I'm going to go over the percent of Stanford students who agree or strongly agree that they feel like they matter to the community. If you look at Sanford middle school, we had a significant decrease. If you look in 2019, 62% of our students felt like they mattered, and now we're at 50%. That's frustrating, right? I feel like as a proud member of Sanford staff and also a PTA member at Carl Lamb School, and think about the monthly You Matter initiatives that happen at the school, as well as a ton of initiatives that happen by the school staff at the middle school, that can be discouraging. When I look at that number, it makes me think that it's something we want to dive a little bit deeper in. Why are you feeling like you don't matter to the community, right? Because that's a pretty big change from 2019 to 2023. Same thing at Sanford High School. We have another statistically significant rate of 41% of our students feeling like they matter to the community versus 46%. That's a low number. 41% of our kids feel like they matter. When I look at this, I don't want to put our high school reps on the spot, but maybe I will. When you see that, what does that mean to you? When you see that 41% of our, of your fellow students feel like they matter in the community?
I was just thinking, this doesn't really have anything to do with your question, but I think it's interesting to think about. Like, I was thinking, I remember being in sixth grade and taking that survey. So it's almost like you see like, that 62% was like us who are in high school now. So if you think about it that way, it's even more crazy how much it's dropped.
It's dropped.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was all I had to add. I'm not really sure why, but I think it's really interesting.
Yeah. And one of the things that we have at both the middle school and at the high school is we have school counseling advisory councils, where we also have a student population. And one of the things I'm going to look to the middle school and high school advisory councils is digging a little deeper into this particular data point around why kids are feeling like they don't matter in our community. Because I think that is frustrating because we want kids to feel like they matter, because we know that they matter. And I think many of us feel like we do a lot of work towards helping kids feel like they're matter, but they're telling us that they're not feeling that way. And so we need to dig a little deeper into that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think one of the things that last fall, before this data even came out, is that in the school department, we, we knew that vaping was a major concern. Substance use was a concern in our community. And so our approach was to partner with Maine Health, to bring staff together, our health instructors, our school counselors, our administrators, to really talk about how, what are we doing to approach this issue in a preventative way? And I think we've, we've seen some success with that. I think as we look at our numbers this year, I can say from a, from a data standpoint, our vape infractions that we're seeing in our middle school are down significantly. At the high school, we were seeing a positive trend. We seem to have an uptick coming back from break. But we are seeing some positive signs in regards to the data. So like Stephanie says, I'm curious to see what that data will say to us when we get the new results back in. And so with that collaboration, we had a vape task force that we met, and we talked about a number of these things that I'm going to talk about in particular. So some of the things that we're doing in the school department in regards to the M.I.A.S. data, we have implemented a signs of suicide program, both at the middle school and the high school, that just makes the signs, awareness of suicide, awareness out for students, and we're talking about it. Tobacco treatment program at the Sanford High School and Sanford Middle School. So students that, that are in violation of our tobacco policy, they meet with a social worker. The social worker assesses for need, connects them with My Life, My Quit, which is an online program to help support teens in a more friendly way, a texting way. And then she does follow-up sessions with them to make sure that they're on the right track, to provide them the support that they need. We were able to bring in a full-time substance use counselor last year, who just transitioned into private insurance pay in November. But we're still connecting students to a substance use counselor that we haven't had before. Because this is not an issue where students are doing it, we hand out a consequence, and then it's going to stop. And we have students that are addicted. And so how are we getting at that root cause? How are we getting to deal with that addiction? And so Susan Lombardo has been a great resource for that. Getting mental health supports in our school has been difficult. We traditionally had a relationship with Sweetser. Sweetser's not able to fill our need. Over the summer, we reached out, Beth Leturno and I, we reached out to Spurwick. We said, how can you help us? They brought, they've given us an additional person. We still don't have all those positions filled, but just trying to expand our network. We've reviewed our health curriculum, making sure that we're using engaging materials, that vape instruction, tobacco prevention stuff is happening in an earlier age. We raised awareness of substance use. We've had guest speakers come in to both the middle school and the high school. We've had student panels. We've done student videos. So that's been one of the strategies. And then Gear Parent Network, we have some parenting education that is coming up this spring. We had done a session last fall, so trying to get it at that as well. So multiple things that are happening to support our students from an education standpoint, but also to provide some support for those students that are using. Moving forward, Beth talked a lot about preventative factors, the proactive factors, really focusing on early intervention. And that's a theme, I think, and if you've been following our school committee meetings, early intervention, when we talk about pre-K, when we talk about the work of the first 10 grand, when we talk about the homeless work that we're doing, trying to, early prevention for students and families, building on that, students' protective factors, connecting schools with the community. Beth mentioned we have a lot of things that we offer for our students, whether it be the arts, athletics, clubs. We have a lot of things that we're offering to students. But are we, are we spreading that net wide? And are we connecting all the students? Or do we have the same students participating in three or four different activities? So really looking at that, how are we connecting our students to the school? And then how are we connecting the schools, students to our community? Continue to advocate to fund the current resources we have in our school community, in our schools. So our social work, our substance use counselors, we, we've got to continue to advocate for those resources, both at the local level and the state level. Given the financial times we are in, it's going to, there's going to have to be some advocacy on everybody's part. So that's our presentation. The students will be taking the survey again in February, I believe, February, right?
February, March.
February, in March. And then those results will come back to us, and we will share those results back to you. I'm hoping we see some positive data with that. But boots on the ground say we have seen some improvement, but there's still a lot of work that we have to do with that. So with that, we'll open it up to questions for folks.
I just thought it was interesting, the, the 2019 to 2023, like you said, you were part of that middle school group. So that's kind of a, and it'd be interesting to see more comparison, I think, between, between that information. And then I guess just my other thought was like, are the questions exactly the same from 2019 to 2023? You know, like, are they worded exactly the same? So I guess those are the only two thought things that I thought, hmm, interesting.
They are worded exactly the same.
Oh, good, yeah.
Yeah, I thought what you had brought up was also like just a, a good point. Because I just think about, you know, having a senior right now and a senior last year, just, you know, some of the kids that, that were in the middle school at that time, and then just sort of life changes after COVID and sort of different paths that they took. It sadly, it, you know, I think the results show that. And hopefully, as we're getting farther and farther away from COVID and with students taking it, hopefully, and with everything that's being done, hopefully, we do see improvements. Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that up. Excuse me, because it really put it into context, right? And I agree, just wondering, when you think about COVID and you think about all the changes, and we, you know, we all have kids, and we've talked about the differences that we see between our seniors or, you know, ones that just graduated versus who we have now. Yeah, it's just, it's interesting. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the next set of numbers, hoping and praying that it's, we see it going up and getting better.
And just to be clear, because when we were at the school committee State of Maine Conference in October, we had seen
in October, we had seen a lot of this data. It wasn't school-specific, but we had seen sort of the trends. And I remember they hadn't, they were in the middle of like, going through all that data, which is like a ton of work, is what they were saying.
It takes a long time to get the data back after the students take this.
Right. Is it about a year?
Almost a year.
Almost a year, that's what I thought, yep.
Yeah, yeah. Is there any initiatives that Sanford community outside of the schools is doing to work on this as well? Because, you know, like, mattering to the community, you know, the schools, you can see some really proactive steps that you're taking. Is there anything outside of the schools, of the Sanford community that you're aware of is working to, on this issue?
That's a great question. I can take that one. We focus a lot on working with parents. We know that parents are the number one influence on their children. And especially with the pandemic, more people at home really focusing on modeling healthy behaviors for your youth. And what is it showing them when you come home from work? And you're like, I had a stressful day, I'm going to pour myself a drink. Like, what is, you know, your kids are seeing all of that. So I would say a lot of our work focuses on reaching parents, but I will also say that's very hard to do. And that I'm sure you know from working in the schools. We try to offer trainings and in-person Zoom, like really trying to meet people where they're at, and it's difficult. But I would say, other than the school, I mean, really, parents are the number one population that we would like to work with and to help educate on what they can do to help with mattering, mental health, substance use. But there are things that we are doing. So safe storage of medications is one of, kind of one of our big initiatives. So that seems to be something people are, it's easier to get on board with it. Something we can hand out to people, and you know, we can, you know, even if they don't want to say that they're using a illegal drug, or if it maybe is legal, maybe they have cannabis or edibles. If it's kind of like, oh, keep your prescriptions in this, keep this, keep alcohol in this, anything that you don't want your child to get into. Because if we can decrease access, then, I mean, that's, I don't know if we had ease of access in this, that would have been good to have. That is, that's half the battle. If you can't access these substances, then they can't use them. So that is a big initiative. And we're lucky, we do have a lot of community partners that, we get together monthly, actually. There's a Substance Use Prevention Coalition, and it's open to anybody in the community that wants to be a part of it. But we talk about these things, and we talk about how, what we can be doing and how we can be working together. Because we know this is not a, you know, something that just the school district needs to handle. It's not just something that is handled at home. It's everything. It's the laws around cannabis. Why is there, you know, a cannabis retailer? Why does a student have to pass three of them on their way to school, right? And why is, you know, when you go out to eat, is everything, you know, a water glass even has an alcoholic logo on it? So like, we do a lot of work like that, too. But it's hard, because it's so normalized in our society, especially alcohol, but now with cannabis, too, just being legal and seemingly everywhere. The perception is that everyone's doing it. And I think as a youth and as an adult, too, it can feel, it can feel isolating, and it can feel like everyone's doing it, it can't be that bad. And so the perception of harm is low. So there's a lot to it, but hopefully that helped a little bit.
Yeah, and I think in terms of mattering in the community, I look at some of the opportunities that local employers have, as well as community people. We need more volunteers. You know, unfortunately, right now, Nassau is not extending their basketball program to high school students. And I get why, right? It's a lack of volunteers, it's a lack of time available in the gym. But then we have this large group of kids that maybe didn't make the team in the high school, or just sort of like to do it to stay healthy, and now that opportunity is closed. We do have other things, like Memorial Gym is open certain nights a week, or at Pride School, they do, there's volleyball certain nights. But there's also the idea of transportation. How are you getting there? You know, local employers, I think, trying to connect with kids. Some of our kids that don't do well in school, in that sort of regular school day, flourish in employment, right? They are money motivated. And we love that, right? That they are proud of their work, they're proud of their job. School's not really their thing, but they can succeed this way. And so I think for us to continue to have additional mentorships with employers in the community, and people just caring, right? Checking in on your next-door neighbor, or your high school student that lives down the block, asking about their day. Even though they might be annoyed and think you're weird, they know that you care. And so I think that's something for us all to sort of continue to do, to reach out.
Stephanie, Beth, and Steve, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your team putting this together. It's helpful, because you're talking about a survey that we can see and gauge over time with things. One of the things I would probably encourage is when we see things from this survey, as much as it still is way up here, that may be concerning with us, it's still maybe something that we want to dig into deeper and try to look at a survey about some, when you're talking about the mattering in a community, I'm a pretty bad guesser sometimes. So I don't want to guess why people aren't feeling madder in the community. And I know, as a kid, I liked being asked. Yes, there's a balance between surveys too much. But I would think if we could come into that, that would be something for us to get some information coming back. Because, you know, as we sit here and see all the hard work that's going into that, and the feeling the disappointment on that, I think that's the area, if we can really dig into that and get more information back, that can also help us come back to be able to address and go forward.
That's a great point. I'd say that is, and a lot of us were, having that is hurt. And if you ask them, they'll tell you. So it really is asking, and wanting, listening, wanting to be heard. So we had a, um, urgent summit, urgent summit. And we actually asked, so it's not Stanford's, the county-specific responses. And as we did, we said, what makes you feel like you matter? What makes you feel like you matter? And you'd be surprised at the response. I don't know if you'd be surprised, but I was a little surprised at the responses. Some of them, it's when someone said hello. Someone asked me how it was, and they acted, okay, meant it. Saying it, when one person acknowledges me at home. So I'd be happy to share those. I'm sure, you know, they are perfect as well. But even like a project like that, and one of the, asking them, what makes you feel like you matter? It can be confidential, it can be not, but really just hearing from them.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, under the superintendent's report, where we can turn it over to our student representatives for any updates that you have for the school committee, as well as releasing, I guess, reviewing the latest Sanford Spotlight as well. So I'll turn it over to our student representatives. Take it away.
I don't really have much to mention before the spotlight. I just wrote down, for any parents of seniors, there's a Parent FAFSA Help Night, January fifteenth, from six to seven-thirty. Because that can be overwhelming. So there's some help for you if you can't figure it out. And then, going into the Sanford Spotlight, Sanford JMG Students Bring Joy to Local Families. On December twelfth and thirteenth, students from Sanford High School and Sanford Middle Schools, jobs for mains graduates or JMG program embrace the spirit of giving this holiday season during a special two-day volunteer event. And then SRTC hosts holiday party for Carl J. Lamb. Students from Carl J. Lamb Elementary School experienced a festive day of learning and fun at Sanford Regional Technical Center's annual holiday celebration. I didn't know we did that. MAT mentors SHS wrestlers' guide youth program. The wrestling mats at Nassau Community Center have become more than just a training ground. They're now a place where Sanford High School student athletes are giving back to their community and helping shape the next generation of wrestlers.
In our sites around our schools, at Margaret Chase Smith, students participated in a holiday fun day on December twentieth. At Sanford Middle School, sixth-grade students had an engaging biography mockshell party. At Carl J. Lamb, kindergarten classrooms have been using Hegarty and UFLI for phonies, which help develop reading and writing skills. At Sanford Pride, they hosted a NEDS mindset mission, which is an assembly that focuses on the growth mindset. At Carl J. Lamb, they recently hosted their variety show on December twentieth. And we have two new school committee members, as previously mentioned, Lisa Blanchett and John Stimmel.
And have you missed the great music that our Sanford High School and middle school chorus and band put on? Well, good news for you. You can find them right on the WSSR TV YouTube page. And I recommend giving them a listen, if you haven't already. Spartan Times, which is our online news outlet for the Sanford High School, had a very successful year. The website received over forty-eight thousand likes and a twenty-five percent increase from two thousand and twenty-three, and welcomed twenty-four-point-eight thousand visitors to the page, which is a thirty-three percent increase from last year. The First Ten January Newsletter, the First Ten Sanford January Newsletter announces its two thousand and twenty-five kindergarten trial, beginning with a community-wide registration night on February twenty-sixth, from five-thirty to six PM at seven-nine-zero Main Street. Just a little update, as a reminder, attendance does matter. We recommend you download our app to get notifications, news, this newsletter even. For weather procedures, when there's inclement weather, we work closely, we work closely with local authorities, public works, transportation services, meteorologists, and all that, to ensure that staff and students are top priority. Our winter athletic schedules, you can stay connected with them. You can now, as a new addition, watch them through Huddle live. You can go on newsletter and click that link over there. Some community announcements, you can, if you have anything to share, events, activities, whatnot, with the school committee, you can send an application process through the community resources guide as well. And as well, free meals, we offer free meals, breakfast and lunch at those certain times. In the employee spotlight, if I can find it, thank you, is Barbara. She's been, Barbara Noon, thank you. Starting a little, kind of a little hard read right there. She's been working for almost thirty-five years, so congrats. Nominations for Open Teacher of the Year are up. Two thousand and twenty-six Teachers of the Year. And there are some helpful links, current with the Sanford community, as well as Main Street memo, just a profile on Sanford's first assistant city manager, tips for safer roads and clear streets, and employment opportunities.
Thank you, Zach, Matt, Elsie, nice job. With that, just wanted to reiterate that through this month of January, there are nominations open for the two thousand and twenty-five York County Teacher of the Year. As mentioned right there, there's a link that can bring you that something, where anybody can nominate anybody, pretty much. You can have that as students nominating their teachers, it can be parents and family members nominating, it can be colleagues, it can be community members with that. I know in the past, Sanford's been very fortunate to have a lot of our staff and students recognized with that. So that's something else just to put on people's radar for that. Moving ahead, the Sanford School Committee and the City Council had a joint workshop back in December, on December eleventh. We met with a consultant, Greg Freshley, and we used that workshop to gain a better understanding of what makes a high-functioning board, general consensus on areas that need improvements, and how to make things better and build enthusiasm for our shared work ahead. So I want to thank Greg in the City Council, but also thank all the school committee. We had everybody in attendance for that, so that was very much appreciated. Also, wanted to mention that on Sunday, December fifteenth, we had a pipe burst at Margaret Chase Smith School. We were very fortunate. It happened after the building check on Sunday, that we had Sunday morning. But we were, a teacher who was in preparing and getting ready for the upcoming week noticed it. And so we immediately called in a lot of our custodial team, called out also to SERVE Pro. That quick response really assisted and helped us. The students of Margaret Chase Smith School did have to miss school on Monday, December sixteenth. But through a lot of hard work from the staff at Margaret Chase Smith School, as well as our custodial team and maintenance team and the people of SERVE Pro, we were able to get our students back into school. With that, can't thank our people enough. We were able to finish that week of school prior to the vacation. And then over the holiday vacation, our team was able to replace ceiling tiles, paint, replace some sheet rock, had to fix the elevator, smoke detector replaced, new flooring installed, and completing that final clean with that. So we were in a situation where we expect to reach our deductible for our insurance based on that. We were also able to save a lot of content, a lot of materials for that. So wanted to make sure that we announced that. Also wanted to mention that at the City Council meeting on December seventeenth, the Sanford City Council agreed to accept the donation of land around Carl J. Lamb Elementary School, which was donated by Jonathan Mapes and his family. And so that, very appreciative of that. That's something that, for us, is going to help the school department. By owning that land, we can also look into some long-term planning around maybe creating some other access, additional access, both entrance and exits to Carl J. Lamb School. Do a really nice job right there, but it's a congested area. There's one way in and one way out with that. So very much want to thank Jonathan and his family for that donation, for us to be able to look at that going forward. And then also, as the last part of my report, let people know that prior to the holiday vacation, the York County superintendents met for us to, as we do monthly, coming back. This meeting was held at the Benford Center of Technology. And I just wanted to announce that as we are working in, right in the middle of our budget season, as we're reviewing the budgets, I want people to know that York County superintendents are also working on two particular areas of focus of trying to advocate with our elected officials, with our legislators, in two main areas. There have been two bills that have been already submitted. There's a deadline, I think, of coming up this month of January tenth, but there's already been two bills that have been submitted. One is an Act to Fund Students in Main Schools Who Are Experiencing Homelessness for that. And the other one is an Act to Fund Main's Economically Disadvantaged Students Fairly. And so those are, we're continuing to move ahead in that. That's going to be something that I know I'll be advocating, but I think all of us in our community can be able to push for those areas. As we know, in previous school committee meetings, we've seen the impact of homelessness for that, and what that impact comes back onto the school department, that we have to come back to be able to manage that. It's a lot of ways unfunded, so we want to be able to make sure that that's going to be funds that are going to be part of the essential programs and services formula. And then the other one, economically disadvantaged students. During the pandemic, that factor was increased. And then after the pandemic, it was decreased. And as we're looking at that and seeing the increase for that, those are two areas that we really want to continue to be able to advocate for, that were also discussed at that, our last York County community, last York County Superintendent. that, our last York County Community, last York County Superintendent's meeting for that. And that's my, that's my report for this evening.
Great, and thank you to all the superintendents who are working at the state level. I know there's a lot of other groups working at the state level for funding as well, so we're grateful for all that extra time that they're doing. Moving on to Director's Report, Mr. Bucier.
My items tonight are scattered throughout the agenda, so I just have one quick thing right now. We received a large boot donation back in December. A big thank you to Shane's All Natural and the Training Post in Kidery, who have generously donated approximately four hundred pairs of winter boots for our elementary students, and this is the second consecutive year that they have done this. I also want a special thank you to Ann and Jeff Hanselman, Maureen Pelletier, and the Backpack Program for coordinating this and helping to deliver them in the snow. The one time it snowed this year is when we were bringing them all in the building. It was great. We also want to extend our gratitude to the elementary outreach staff, school counselors, social work, admin team, that are working to ensure that these boots get on the feet that need them, and we definitely need them this week with the cold weather that has happened. So I just want to say a thank you to them, and that's all I have under this section of my report.
Perfect, see you soon. All right, we've skipped a few things, and now we will move on to the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five School Committee Budget Calendar.
Sure, so as I mentioned, and as, I'm going to pass this out to our members, and as you can see on the screen, it is, we have started our budget preparation for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. And so, currently, right now, business administrator Cheryl Fornier, Steve Bucier, and I are meeting with all of our principals and directors to go over their budgets line by line. And so, I think there might be one change to this already that might work and better in terms of people's schedules. Initially, we were looking to start our budget with the school committee, with the school committee, first School Committee Budget Workshop, looking to do that on Monday, January 27th. I think what I would like to do, if it's okay, is propose to move that to Wednesday, January 29th. I think where Monday, January 27th is going to be difficult for a number of our school committee members, so if we could move our first School Committee Budget Workshop to Wednesday, January 29th, that's when we'll get an executive summary of all the articles, and really try to dig into that budget to see what its initial budget is for that. We'll do that on the 29th, and we'll do that right here in the City Hall Chambers. Then, on Monday, February 3rd, we will have a School Committee Budget Workshop beginning at four o'clock. Our plan is to have that Budget Workshop really focus on revenue, especially the essential programs and services funding. We expect at that time to have that preliminary funding information, so we will focus on that on Monday, the 3rd. Prior to a School Committee, we'll have our regular School Committee Business Meeting on Monday, February 3rd, following the Budget Workshop, that'll take place at 6:00 PM. We have on their agenda to be determined, but we're looking at that School Committee Meeting to have presentations on a couple things. Our multilingual learners, ESOL, that is going to have a presentation at that School Committee Meeting, and the second thing will be pre-K and some of our pre-K expansion efforts. Both of those, I think, will be helpful for us in terms of the budget going forward. So first meeting on Wednesday, the 29th, next meeting on Monday, February 3rd, a Budget Workshop, four to six, followed by a School Committee Meeting at six. And then, we also have, on the calendar, Wednesday, February 5th, School Committee Budget Workshop, four to six thirty, Monday, February 10th, School Committee Budget Workshop, Wednesday, February 12th, School Committee Budget Workshop. We don't have anything planned for the February school vacation, the week of February 17th to the 21st. When we return on Monday, February 24th, we are looking to have a School Committee Budget Workshop, and if we are ready at that time, we can also look to have a regular School Committee Meeting on Monday, February 24th. As part of that agenda, may include a motion to adopt the final two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school budget. If we are not ready, we can then also meet on Wednesday, February 26th for a School Committee Budget Workshop, and then the following Monday, March 3rd, we have a School Committee Budget Workshop tentatively planned at four o'clock, if needed, because at Monday, March 3rd, is our March Regular School Committee Business Meeting, and with that agenda to be determined, but that also is another opportunity for us to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget, if needed, because if you look at the next page, we are then going to the City Council for the budget meeting. So, we need to have a budget approved by the School Committee to make, in advance of that Tuesday, March 4th, City Council Meeting. At that one, you'll see probably an overview of the city and school budget. Tuesday, March 11th, will be a City Council Budget Meeting, that's when we will really do a school department detailed presentation of the school budget, and there will also be a public hearing that evening at the regular City Council Meeting on Tuesday, March 11th. Tuesday, March 18th, the city will present their budget to the City Council. Tuesday, the 25th, we'll wrap up both the city and the school budgets, because the plan would be to finalize a budget on Tuesday, April 1st, for that April 1st City Council Meeting, is where they would take action to approve a school budget for that, so that we can be able to get that information to our voters and their aggregate amounts for final authorization. Remember, the school budget does have to be approved by our voters, and that is scheduled for Tuesday, June 10th. Prior to that, on Tuesday, May 6th, there'll be another public hearing on the Budget Validation referendum. So that's the schedule we get with that, that's similar to what we've used in the past. I wanted to outline that so that we have some options built in, depending on how things go, we may have workshops, especially those Wednesdays, or we may need to cancel those if necessary. But that, I think, allows us to, give us the opportunities that we need to be able to take actions. So, that's what I present this evening as a proposal, open for feedback, questions, or recommendations.
I would just say, it sounds like a really fun February, March. Would anyone like to make a recommendation to accept the twenty-four, twenty-five School Committee Budget Calendar as presented?
I will make the recommendation to accept the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, five School Committee Budget Calendar as presented, because it does look like so much fun.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
So we'll make that change, that we'll start on Wednesday, the 29th, for that, in terms of presenting the budget in its entirety, overview of that, then break it down by each article. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Welcome, Cheryl, and I'm seeing that I skipped the recommendation for the audit report, so I apologize earlier on, but you are here for the November 24th, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-four financials.
I am. Good evening. Tonight, we're going to talk about the November financials. So, we are currently running about two point one million dollars under budget, but that's mostly because of when our payrolls hit compared to prior years. But if you look at the current year compared to last year, we're only running about ninety-four thousand dollars above what we did last year, so that's due to the extra payrolls. Current revenue is currently running about one point one million dollars more than last year, and so you can see that, and that's mostly all of our subsidy. I've changed some of the graphs towards the bottom of the page here. I've moved the SR money up into the federal grants, because we're, pretty much, that's going to be done. So adding that in to the federal grant area, we're at revenue of just about a million dollars, and expenses of just under, just over one point one million dollars. Enterprise Fund, which is your three, Adult Education, Enrichment, the School Nutrition, and the Performing Arts Center, we've at point nine million dollars worth of revenue and one point one million dollars worth of expense. That always runs a slightly more expensive revenue, because we are always running one month behind on revenue for nutrition or the Food Service Department. And then I took this graph and added a whole bunch of kind of new things that I've been trying to pay attention to where the bigger grants are. So this grouping here is about one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of revenue we've received so far this year, with a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars worth of expense. And so, that's, just to show you some of the grants that we have, there are smaller ones, but they still help us fund items that you wouldn't, might not be able to do otherwise. So Article One, which is our regular instruction, is running slightly below budget by five hundred and sixteen thousand, and it's running under last year by two hundred and thirteen thousand, that's due to the extra payroll that we'll be seeing hitting pretty soon. Article Two, similar to Article One, is running below budget by four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars due to the extra payroll, and it's running actually slightly above by two hundred and forty thousand, that is due to billing of outside placement that has been coming in consistently lately compared to prior year. Article Three, which is our SRTC program, we're running under budget by about two hundred and eighty-four thousand, but we're running right about where we were in last year by about thirty-four thousand. Article Four, which is mostly a lot of supplies, excuse me, nope, not supplies, wrong one, is mostly athletics, we're running about fifty-five thousand dollars under budget, but we are pretty close to the same exact amount we were last year at this time, so we're running similar to last year. Article Five, which is the one that I was going to say is a lot of curriculum items, a lot of supplies for IT and that stuff, all end up in this budget, is running about twenty-seven thousand dollars under budget, and running a slightly below last year of fifteen thousand dollars, and it's just all timing, and they're really, they always spend a good portion of their budget all at the same time. Article Six, which is System Administration, is running about fifty-seven thousand dollars below budget, but it's running just almost the same amount as last year, so it's running similar to the prior year. Article Seven, which is our School Administration, is running about twenty-five thousand dollars under budget, and it's actually running slightly more than last year of thirty-two thousand dollars over last year, but it's staying within budget. Article Eight, which is Transportation, this one kind of looks funny because of a prior year not getting billed consistently, and this year we are getting billed consistently. So right now, we're running about forty-six thousand dollars below budget, but we're running eighty-four thousand above last year, but that's because of inconsistent billing from prior year. A lot of these graphs are based on prior year percentages, so things kind of fluctuate, and so we try to do our best handle on trying to show you where we're at based on prior years, because we only budget, we don't budget by the month, we budget by the year. So that's a little bit different. I'm kind of filling in for a couple people, because they had a little bit of a blank look. Article Nine, Facilities Maintenance, we're running below budget, about a million dollars, but we're also running below last year. A lot of it's timing, a lot of, we bought a lot of stuff towards the beginning of the last year, we had some CIP costs and stuff that we bought towards the beginning of last year. This year, we're actually buying it towards the end of the last year, because of what it is, and we haven't gotten billed for the Willard Building Boiler yet, and that's our biggest piece, and so that kind of fluctuates the percentage a little bit. Debt, it looks like we're over budget, but it's the way this system works, because we pay almost all of our principal at the beginning of the year, and all of our interest towards the end of the year, it actually makes it look kind of funny like we're over budget, but we're, we'll be at the penny of that, because that one, we know the dollar amount, so we're going to get charged. So, I'm not worried about that one. Article Eleven, which is Performing Arts Center and WSSR TV, we're running just below budget by about six thousand, we're running above budget for eleven thousand from last year, that's due to a health insurance change. And Adult Education, I mean, I don't think you can get too much closer than this, but that's running about four thousand dollars below budget, and it's running about four thousand dollars above last year's expenses. So all in all, it looks good, everything seems to be running in the right direction. Any questions?
No, thank you so much. Would anyone like to make a recommendation?
I'll make a motion to accept the November financials as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, thank you, Cheryl, and moving on. You'll do the audit. Yeah, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Audit Report.
Probably should have done this when Christian was here, but, my apologies.
So now we just need to accept the financials that I handed out during the workshop.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, four Audit Report as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No, all in favor? All right, thank you, Cheryl. All right, Mr. B. is back for John T. Gorman Foundation Grant.
I am back. Okay, so I have some exciting news to share with you this evening. The John T. Gorman Foundation, their mission is to make Maine a more equitable place where all children and families can thrive. Back in early November, late October, they reached out, and they said, we want to know how you can help, how we can help. They really looked at the work we were doing with Outreach to support families that were experiencing housing instability, and the work of First Ten that we are doing to support students and families in the first ten years of their life. And so, they said, how can we help? And we talked about it, they said, we have this grant opportunity we'd like you to apply for, and so, we applied for the grant, and we heard right before the holiday break that we were awarded a grant in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for eighteen months. I'll talk a little bit about what that grant will look like. The first six months are a planning period for the grant, and the twelve-month will be an implementation period for the grant. The majority of the grant funds will be designated to hire another outreach clinician at the elementary school. That elementary clinician will be working on, really developing and aligning systems. Some specific things will be in regards to early identification, so identifying those families and students that are in need of support, and what does that look like? Working with community partners, working with school partners to take a resource inventory and align those resources, and then provide families with support through education, referral to services, really aligning our systems. The outreach clinician will be paid for, there would be some funds set aside for family education, family engagement activities, student engagement enrichment activities, some other expenses that families may need that may be a barrier for them. I see this as an opportunity for us to not only engage with community partners, but also to engage with adult education, really looking to get our families supported and connected. There is also some overhead cost that we can use for, to pay for whatever we would like to with the grant. like to with the grant. But like I said, it's $235. Now, the big question is, what happens when the grant goes away, Steve? So Matt and I talked about this, and we really see this, we have the First Ten Grant work going on, we have the work that's currently going on with our outreach staff to really support that housing instability. This we see as a tool to really strengthen the coordination that's happening between the school and the community, really fast-track that First Ten work that we're doing, that First Ten work that we're doing right now. Really, the heavy lifting is happening at Sanford Pride, but how do we align that to really get the other schools to do, start doing that, some of that integration and that, more of the lifting piece of that? I see this as a win-win, and when the position goes away, the systems will still be in place. And hopefully, our community will be in a better place with housing, so we won't need as much outreach come two years out, 18 months out, when this position goes away with that. So, bring that for you tonight for your, I think we need to vote to accept the funds.
Yeah, that's one of the, as part of the grant, is the School Committee does need to take official action to accept, or not. It's the School Committee's choice, but as you mentioned, the recommendation is to accept the John T. Gorman Grant Funds as Steve has presented.
What's the timeline versus the First Ten Grant running out time? Like, what's, is it the same time? Is it?
The First Ten Grant, yes, it's right in alignment. So the TJ Gorman Funds will end the same year that the First Ten Grants funds run out. But if you remember, the Sustainability Plan for the First Ten Grant is that, that person that we have on staff, that outreach clinician, is going to slide into the Title I Funds to strengthen what we're doing for family engagement. So that's...
And then, is this something that, is there like a delayed start where, I don't know, maybe it lasts a little longer, or?
No, it's pretty much 18. It's in 18 months.
And it starts like, as soon as approved? Okay. Okay, just...
Is it a timeline, Steve, that we'll start this work in 2025 and the rest of this school year with the idea of really going 2000, next school year, '25 and '26, and have it end at the end of the '25-'26 school year?
So the plan is, we're going to start planning now?
Yep.
So six months planning, hire the outreach clinician coming on for next school year, and then run through next school year.
I just have one quick question. You mentioned that they reached out to us?
Yes.
And it was because of the work that First Ten, and what was the other?
Our outreach work has been heavily involved with supporting families that are experiencing housing instability, and through York County Community Action, received the TJ Gorman funding for a housing navigator. And through that work and our outreach staff collaborating with York County Community Action, that they said, "Hmm, I see a potential here for us to support this work." And so that's how they came to us. And the mission of the TJ Gorman Foundation is almost identical to the mission of the First Ten work.
Yeah.
You know, the help, help all children thrive and learn, help all families learn. It's like a natural marriage.
And it's a nice leverage point. I think you can see where those funds can really be impactful.
Yeah.
I was asking because it's always, it's been so impressive to hear about all the work that's going on with the First Ten Grant and everything that they've been, Sue Edmund and everybody has been doing at Pride, and all of you, so it's just, thank you.
And I think, I just want to say, it's, when we have, working with the Department of Education, I think Stanford's a special place in terms of the collaboration that happens within the School Department that makes First Ten successful. With York County Community Action, the work they're doing, the work the city's doing, it's just, there's good things happening, and people are noticing, and they're coming to the table, get us funds, so.
Yeah, the coordination and collaboration's really helpful, not working in ISOs and silos.
Yeah, good teamwork, for sure. All right, would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the John T. Gorman Foundation Grant.
I'll second.
Wonderful. Any discussion? All in favor? Wonderful, thank you. Does not seem like we have any old business, we're moving on to resignations and retirements.
Feudal announced, Jennifer Caswell, Library Ed Tech 3 at Sanford Pride, Michael Walker, Second Shift Custodian at the High School and Technical Center, Risa Grace as a, in the Adult Ed Program. Also have some Schedule B, C, and D appointments. Nate McCullen, Josh Allen is Assistant Athletic Director Co., Split. Heidi Hamerly and Sean Rowe, Assistant Coaches for the Unified Basketball Program. And Derek Moore is a mentor for recently hired probationary teacher over at Sanford Middle School. I do have some transfers to announce. Lindsay Gleason at Carl J. Lamb, moving from a Literacy Intervention Title I Ed Tech 2 to a kindergarten literacy Ed Tech 2, staying at Carl J. Lamb. Nicole Dagel at the High School for Kitchen Personnel, moving as a substitute coming into the High School Kitchen Personnel on a part-time basis, four and a half hours a day. And Dennis Wilson, Elementary Technology Support for our elementary schools, moving over to the Library Ed Tech at Sanford Pride Elementary for that. And then there is one nomination that we need the School Committee to take action on, and that is nominating Amanda Buckley as a school psychologist over at Carl J. Lamb. Very pleased to be able to get Amanda for that position. She's currently working in a School Department in New Hampshire, but is scheduled to join us later this month on the 27th, pending her approval this evening of a first-year probationary contract. Looking for a recommendation for Amanda.
Would you like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the contract for the above nomination for the first-year probationary as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Welcome aboard, Amanda. We're glad you've come into us. All right, next is Policies and Procedures. Welcome back.
Okay, welcome back. I have a list of policies for first reading this evening. These policies were reviewed at our workshop back on December 16th. These are not all of the policies we discussed that evening. We held some back. These are the ones that I think we had an agreement on and bringing for a first reading this evening. The first policy, Policy CBE, Job Description of the Superintendent. The previous version focused mainly on basic administrative duties like budget, supervision, and maintaining records. The new version expands to include areas including communication, leadership, staff development, and community relations. Policy CBI, Evaluation of the Superintendent. This changes the coding from CBG to CBI. This is an updated policy from MSMA, and it changes it from a more structured process to more collaborative process with the superintendent and the school committee. Policy CE, Administrative Committees. And Policy CHD, Administration and Policy Absence. These were, had one simple change, it changed the term "School Board" to "School Committee." Policy CHA, Development and Administrative Procedures. This combines Policy CHB and CHC, which were last revised in 1989, to one policy, CHA, and just really simplifies the language. Policy CHCA, Approval of Handbook and Directives. The updated policy clarifies language to include guardians. In some of our policies, it says parents. And so we tried to make it more inclusive, and so we've included guardians there. Also changes board to committee, and some other minor language changes for clarity. Policy CM, the School District Annual Report. The updated policy expands to include specific areas like student achievement, curriculum, test scores, staffing, enrollment, budget, and facilities. It also adds a purpose for the report's role as a key communication tool for informing stakeholders about the school district's progress and conditions. And Policy CIA, Administrative Arrangements. Once again, this policy comes back from 1989, where the Assistant Superintendent at that time was the business manager and curriculum director, so the Assistant Superintendent's role has changed in this policy. And we also changed, at that time, the Central Office Team was a Central Office Cabinet, so we changed that to a Central Office Team. And so that's what's up with those changes. And so I make the recommendation to accept the first reading of Policies CBE, CBI, CE, CHD, CHA, CHCA, CM, and CI.
I make a motion to accept the first reading of Policies CB-E, CBI, CE, CHD, CHA, CHCA, CM, and CI.
I second.
Any discussion on all the Cs? No? All in favor? Perfect, all right. Moving on to the second readings.
Okay, the following, I have four policies for a second reading. Policy CF, School Building Administration. The updated Policy CF, School Building Administration, clarifies the principal's role, detailing specific responsibilities in areas like instructional leadership, staff collaboration, and school management. Unlike the old policy, it provides a comprehensive framework for the principal's duties, including curriculum development, teacher supervision, and student discipline. Policy DB, Annual Operating Budget. The annual operating budget policy has been updated to reflect changes in the city charter, replacing the town meeting with the city council as a body where the school budget is presented. Additional, the legal references have been added with that. Policy DBD, Budget Planning. This policy has also been updated to reflect the town charter, replacing the town meeting with the city council. And Policy DBG, Budget Hearings and Adoption Process. This policy has been updated to reflect changes in the city charter, replacing the town meeting with city council. Additionally, the policy now includes language specifying that only amounts pertaining to operating expenses, reserve, or contingency funds, or capital outlay expenditures are approved by voters, and the legal references have been updated. And thank you to Cheryl Fornier for helping with that policy. And my recommendation is to accept the second reading of CF, DB, DBD, and DBG.
I make a recommendation to accept the second reading of Policies CF, DB, DBD, and DBG.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No? All in favor? Thank you. All right, so items for future agendas. Is there any? Anyone? Okay. Calendar announcements?
Okay, Curriculum Committee meeting tomorrow at Central Office. On Wednesday, Special Education Advisory Committee meeting at Sanford Community Adult Education. Next, a week from Wednesday, January 15th, having a Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation meeting. That'll take place at 4:00, and that'll down be at the High School and Technical Center. We've also added a School Committee Workshop on Health Insurance. That'll take place also on Wednesday, January 15th. That'll take place at 2:00 down at the High School and the Technical Center. Also, next Monday is a Wellness Committee meeting. The next Policy Committee meeting is Monday, January 27th. That School Committee Budget Workshop that's on the agenda listed for the 27th, that will not be taking place. Instead, we're going to start that on the 29th, the School Committee Budget Workshop. That'll be right here in the City Hall Chambers at 4:00. The next SRTC Advisory Committee meeting is the end of this month, January 31st. That'll take place right down the SRTC Cafe at 8:30. And then, we have another School Committee Budget Workshop scheduled for the first Monday in February at 4:00, followed by our regular business meeting, School Committee Meeting at 8:00. And those are the upcoming calendar announcements.
Wonderful. I do just have one thing to add. There was an error in information. Nassau Community Center will be having a rec basketball league for high schoolers, so that is a win. So, thank you for that information.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah. All right, who would like to make a recommendation to adjourn this meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn at 7:47.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All in favor.
All right, thanks for coming, and thanks for listening, everybody.